Let's see, item of business is the 420 Indian Brook Road. The applicant is supposed to get struck detached garage at the end of existing drivers, which is located within the front yard setback. Is there anybody here representing that? I think there was an architect, I believe.
Also, just letting Susan Atkins in, she's one of the owners. And I'm looking for Juhi. I don't see the architect, do you Kelly?
No, I don't see her right now.
All right, we can, we can go out to somebody else and then she comes in back in. What's her name, Susan Atkins, is that the architect?
Uh, no, I believe she's the homeowner.
Oh, oh.
Yes, Juhi is the architect and she is not on. But Tony Ricky is on if you want to go to Tony.
Okay, hello, what? Yeah, yeah, but they're not here. Okay, hold it. We're gonna go to the next one. We'll go to public hearings for. A public hearing for Tony and Kim Ritchie, 3315 Route 9. That's the one with the apartment upstairs. And there was, there was a question on it about he had a trailer there with an occupied, occupied trailer, but he was gonna remove it, I think about March 1st. And also there was some temporary storage trailer that also is gonna be removed. So there would be just a matter of depending, you know, how, what timing, you know, how long would it take them to get it out and so on and so forth. And the other, so the only real variance you would need would be for the apartment, which is located as a legal nonconforming lot with 15 feet required. And it's a, it only has a, like a 1.52 feet. So you need an upper four residential apartment required to variance and zoning code 175 2021. Is Mr. Ritchie here?
Yes, he's on, he's on, yes.
Uh, Mr. Ritchie? Hello?
Hold on a second.
Hello, hello?
Hi, I got you, Carmine?
Yes.
Okay, hi, this is Bob D, how are you?
Good Bob, how you doing today?
Okay, I can't see you, but I see your name.
Okay.
That's good enough.
I don't know why, but, hold on.
All I got is your name.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not coming up either. No, it's not a video.
He is not on, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not coming on.
Well, you can hear us Bob, right? Sorry, I'm trying to.
I can hear you. Okay, I got you now.
There you go.
All right, like I said, we discussed this last month and the concerns were, as you know, the occupied trailer and you said you were gonna, that person said he'd be out like March 1st or something like that?
March 31st, he's out. He's got a place to go. He wanted to move anyway. So it kind of worked out for the best for everybody.
March 31st, okay.
Yeah.
How long you would think you would need after that? A couple of months to get rid of the trailer? How long would you need, you know, to move the trailer after that? I mean, I don't want to make it have it out there the next day.
No, 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 um, as soon as possible. I mean, weather permitting, I think it could be like, you know.
All right, so Adam.
Couple of months, yeah.
Adam, what do you think it's like, would 90 days be a reasonable time from?
For us, it would be Bob, that would work.
All right, so you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, just to be clear, we're, we're talking about, there's a residential trailer, is that correct?
Yes.
And then there are storage trailers?
Yes, we're just talking about the residential now.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, cause yeah, both, just so we're, we're clear, I believe the board is interested in dates or timetables for the removal of all trailers. So the residential one you indicated was March 31 of this year?
Yes.
And what would be the timetable for the removal of the, the storage trailers?
The construction.
Well, I would like to keep it there for a while because right now the trailers are housing some of the equipment that we have because of the construction that's going, gonna be going on up on the second level. So I would like if possible, a year if possible. I'm not sure how, how long I'm allowed, but.
Well, the code, the code says you're allowed a year. I just don't know if you're allowed on when you went there and so on and so forth. I just want to, we're trying to go back to the residential trailer. I, I, Adam, I could give them some time to remove it. I was just saying March 31st, but I'd like to give them, you know, maybe at least 90 days after that to make sure it's out of 60 days or something.
That's what you're saying.
So it's up to, you know, what the board is comfortable with.
What are, what are other people, what's the time this for the residential trailer to be removed? I was gonna give them three months. Well, let's, let's do one at a time. That's sliding limits, asking me how long. All right, so let's say three months, and I just, let's say three months from the March 31st, and I would make it, what, April, May, June, June 31st, right?
Yes.
I think there are only 30 days.
30 days in June, exactly, right.
30 days in June, okay, so June 30th, it would have to be removed. That's the residential trail.
That's correct.
Correct. Are the board members all right with that? Anybody have any concerns? Okay, all right. And now, the other one's the storage trailer. I know the code says a year. Like I said, you need some time. How much time do you think you would need? It would be, you know, for you.
I, I would think. You asking me? Were you talking to me Bob, I'm sorry?
I'm talking to you, I mean, to write the storage trailer. I know you have to be there to finish the project. You, you're allowed a year and I don't know when they were there or so on and so forth. So I really can't get into that, so, but you are allowed one year temporarily, so.
Can we get, can we ask for a year on those Bob?
What, what date, let's say the year, Adam, will a year from today? Adam?
That, that would be fine.
Okay, today's what, February 8th, right? So we would make it a year from today, February 8th. That would be February 8th of 2021. Is that all right with you, Mr.? Uh, 2022, I'm sorry, Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Okay, that gives you a year from today.
Yeah.
I think that's, that should be sufficient, okay?
Okay.
And board, are the board members have any other? Issues with that? No? You're okay? That's for the temporary trailer. All right, so now we're moving on to the apartment variance. The apartment, it's kind of a, it really isn't a residential area, it's a business area, so on and so forth, so. There's plenty of park in there like that, so, does anybody have any questions on that, the apartment upstairs over the business? Okay, Mr. Ritchie, Mr. Lynn wants to know, is there gonna be any expansion of the building?
Not, not at all. We're within the footprint of what's already there. We're not adding any.
Okay.
Any, any expansion outside the footprint.
No, he's not adding anything outside the footprint, it's staying within the footprint. Okay, any other board members have any questions on the apartment?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned, you know, we, we have a tendency not to follow up on these things. I would, I'm concerned about how we're going, going to be guaranteed that in 2022, that this, that other thing is removed.
The, well, both the unit community and the residential and the other one, and the temporary storage, I mean, trailer. Well, that's gotta be up to the code enforcement officer. I mean, you know, he would have to go out there and check. That would be his job, I imagine, you know, and he would follow up on it. We'd have to maybe, you know, make a note to him or something like that, that, you know, bring it to his attention, but we didn't have any control over that. That would have to be code enforcement.
I, I have a question. Assuming that you get approval to go ahead with this project, what's your timetable? What's your proposed timetable for, for it to be completed?
As soon as possible. I mean, you know, construction, I mean, I'm an electrician and I'm on construction job all the time.
Right.
We, we have a plan, we have.
Well, what's, what's, what's the, the date that you would want to have it done by?
As soon as possible. I mean, I'm gonna say I would like to have it, what's this, a couple of months? I mean, that would be.
Okay, well, I mean, you can't. Yeah, I guess you, yeah.
He gets at least a year on a building from that call, so, you know, I mean.
Okay, no, the reason that I asked is, once you, once the building is completed, then I, I, I think you said that you intend to take the materials from the storage trailers and store it in the lower part of the building, is that correct?
Exactly, yes, that's what I did say, yeah, absolutely.
So I guess the, the removal of the storage trailer would depend on the timetables for building the addition, right?
Exactly. Hopefully it'll be less than the year, but you know, at least we have the year to do it, you know?
Right, right.
I'm hoping for is what I'm saying.
You're hoping that the addition is done and then you can move the stuff from the storage trailer into the main building, okay?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, any board members? Yeah, we're good.
Adam?
Sure, I spoke with Adam, go ahead.
What about a, a small bond guarantee that the trailer is removed? Is that something that's, we can legally do?
Well, I think it would be sufficient that we're making it a condition of the grant of the request, or the variance request. So one is conditioned on the other.
Right, I agree. It's, it's on a street, it's right on Route 9, so I mean, anybody pass a bike to see it was there or gone. So that would be up to the code enforcement officer. He would know what the date is and it would be helpful to him to, to check on it. I mean, in my opinion. All right, is there any other questions, any board members before I go to the audience? Okay, Kelly, is there any body there from, who would like to speak to this in the audience?
Nobody has their hand up, is there anybody?
How do you put the hand up on the screen? I got to put the hand up and you see him, that's how it works.
He puts their hand up and it's blue.
All right, I guess, I guess there's no, nobody in a, that's, the neighbors have been notified, the letters have been all sent out and everything else like that. All right, so I just only got, let's go over the five factors on this. Mr. Ritchie, what's the possible detriment would the variance have on nearby properties? Mr. Ritchie?
I'm sorry.
There's five factors we go by, okay? And it's, I'm gonna ask you, and it's just, it, it's kind of, it, it makes us consider to the board the things that we consider, okay? We know what you granted or not. First one, as long as the possible detriment would the variance have on nearby properties?
I don't, I don't believe anything, no.
I don't think anything because, you know, the building has already exists.
Yeah.
You did a great job on doing it all, but too, I gotta, gotta give you credit.
Thank you.
To what it looked like before.
The neighbors, the neighbors that we, we speak with everybody, we're friendly with everybody and everybody's very happy with what, what we do with the building and how it's looking, so.
Everybody's looking for more apartments for people, that's for sure.
Yeah.
One, Wendy, what impact would the variance have on a character of the neighborhood? Well, seeing that it's a neighborhood and all like that, I don't see any, any problem.
No, I don't believe so.
If anything, you're updated a building, you want to make the neighborhood better. If you didn't get the variance, how could the board, could you want to accomplish your goal? If you didn't get the variance, there's no other way, I guess, if you didn't get the variance.
No, but we wouldn't get it.
What code requirements are you set to vary? What, what is the variance? What, what is illegal, what, what is it, Adam?
It, it's the structure itself is nonconforming in terms of setback.
Okay.
So they're changing, they're adding particular use in that nonconforming structure. The structure, they're not changing the setback, they're just putting an apartment in a nonconforming structure.
Okay, so we've got to, you have to get the value to put a apartment in a nonconforming structure, correct?
Right.
Okay, uh, let's see, one of the, there, number four. What impact or effect do the variance have on the current physical and environmental conditions in the area?
Well, anything.
Seeing that's a business area and all like that, I don't see any, any. Number five, is variance requested as a result of self-created hardship? No, I don't think so, I think this is just, you're trying to improve and putting a, trying to put a residential building, apartment in there like that, so I don't see that it's gonna hurt anything like that. Are there any, any questions the board members want to ask at this time? Anybody? Wendy? No, okay, so you know that we're gonna include in the, if you get approved, we're gonna vote on it now, but just so you know, we're all on the same page. We're gonna include a thing for the residential trailer, we're gonna give you the June 30th. Okay, 2021, the residential trailer has to be out of there. And then you'll have till February 8th of 2022, that's when the storage trailer has to be out of there. You agreeing with that?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll be the thing. All right, at which time I'd like to, you get a motion on closing a public hearing?
I'll make that move.
Then he makes the motion, all right. Wendy seconded it and everybody's hard, okay. Now I'll take a, a real call vote on the variance. I've got Mr. Lynn, I've got a woman on the phone. Wendy, how do you vote on this? All right, Mr. Lynn votes yes, approved the variance. Mrs. Stone?
I'll vote yes.
Okay, Granite?
I vote yes.
Okay, Paula?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Okay, Mr. Ritchie, you there, Mr. Ritchie?
Yes, I am, yeah.
Oh, it's been approved, okay, under those conditions, you know, you understand?
Yes, sir.
And so, well, you can, the, our attorney has to make up the resolution, everything else like that, but you can call the building inspector, you know, code enforcement office tomorrow, and tell them that we approved it, approved it, and I think he can, I think he can work by the minutes.
Okay.
All right, and then.
Very good.
Should be all set to go and have luck.
Thank you very much, thank you everybody.
Good night, good night now. All right. Next one is a public, a continuation of public hearing for. Is that person come on yet? Did the architect come on yet, Kelly?
Yes.
Let's go back to her. Where is that? That's 420 Indian Brook Road, right? Is she here?
Yes.
Okay, and who's your architect? Again?
Juhi.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Who am I speaking to?
Juhi.
Oh, I see you now, okay.
Yes, sorry, I was trying to sign on from a different computer and there was a, a lag time, so I didn't realize. And I was looking for our agenda and I didn't realize I was the first one on there, my apologies.
Actually, no problem. We're, we're, we're working with this, this is me, just. Last month meeting, you had to get a lot of, a number of things back to me and you provided them all.
Yes.
But you gave me, you sent me a letter, you're, you're asking for a, you said the property is landlocked or something, without direct access, and you want the board to make an interpretation, which side of the property is the front and rear? Can you explain that a little bit to me? Cause I know it's on a, a private road. I know I've been up there, there's two houses, right? One house and the other house further back. You have access to Old Ollman Post Road from a private road, so how do you come to the landlocked question?
As far as I know, the only access to the site is through a neighbor's property, an easement. I can show you, that, that's as far as I know. I, let me show you my screen. Let's see.
Well, I drove up there and looked at it, so, you know. Yeah, right, right.
So. All right, so do you see the screen? So this is our client's lot overlooking the pond here. And the, this, the only access that I know of, unless our client can step in and correct me if I'm wrong, is through the neighbor's property, which is like, like an arc-shaped property.
Yeah. I believe it's a private road, cause I, I went to look at it a couple of weeks ago and I drove up to, what's that, private road from Old Ollman Post Road, you drive through this one house in the front, it's not hers, then you go all the way to the back and it's hers, so there really isn't landlocked, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, so what we, when we were looking at this with Baden Watson, they suggested that we ask whether this should be considered a front yard or is this the front yard? So our drawing currently shows that this line is our front yard.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna go, let's see, building inspector, code enforcement officer goes by. I, I'm reading his denial letter. Denial letter says that the application proposes a six under 22 foot square foot garage with a side yard setback, proposing a 14.738 inch setback with 30 feet is required. So he's going, I can need a variance for the side yard setback. And then he also says, further proposed activity encroaches a controlled wetland buffer requiring 100 foot separation from activity. Therefore, application to conservation board is required. So all we're gonna have to do with this, we're gonna have to send this to the conservation board and get a review from them and an opinion from them because of it going into the wetland, going into the buffer, the stream, and that stream, I guess, is Indian Brook.
Yes. I mean, what we were trying to do, I, I understand that they will need to review the application. We were doing our best to keep the footings out of it and I know in the past, on different projects, we were allowed to put cell fences and control the runoffs. So if this is, you know, on.
Yeah. Denial letter from the, from the, from the owner.
Yes.
Yeah, he says also that it has to go there, so I'm gonna go by it with him and Kelly or Joe, this has to go to, forward, this has to be forward to the conservation department for their review and give us an opinion and get back to us and then we'll, we'll schedule it for a public hearing when we get, when we get their report. Any, any board members have any questions on this? Hold on, one second. Yeah, I guess Mr. Lynn wants, the question is that, when board members, how could it be landlocked if you have access to the property, so.
From, from the road is, I mean, yes, it's a, I, I thought it was, you know, maybe I chose the wrong words, I just meant.
Yeah.
Through easement, yeah, private road.
Yeah, but it is a road because I went up there and, you know, you can get to both houses, we've been up on it, except down to Old Ollman Post Road, so what I'm gonna have to do, then I, I can't set this for a public hearing until you go to, in front of the, this will all be forwarded to Cheryl or our secretary will handle it. It'll all be forwarded to the conservation board and they'll hear it and then we get back from them, they approve it, you know, and if they say there's no problem or something like that, then we'll set it for a public hearing.
It's kind of interesting that you sent us back there. We were there for a different application for screen porch and they said, well, you know, we won't worry about the garage because garage is outside of our, our, you know, setback line. But I understand the precautions and so.
I can only go by what I hear from, I got from the building, the code enforcement officer, you know, he's saying that, he says it, says it in his denial letter.
Okay.
So we'll go with that, so go for them and then you get back to us, we have everything else, so we'll be able to set you up for a public hearing event.
Great, great, and so then.
I don't, I don't know when they meet, Kelly, when's they meet, the conservation board?
They meet the day after you do, so.
Wouldn't be till next month?
Correct.
Okay, get to them, then it would be the day after us next month and then you get back to us and we'll set up a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, I guess it's, it's too, we don't have enough time to get on their agenda tomorrow then. Okay, in that case, may we just ask? So then as far as the zoning goes, so it's side yard setback, which means, you know, we, then we will show a side yard setback of 30 feet. And so it's really less of an encroachment, so I guess that makes us look better. And is there anything else that, I, I'm sure our, our clients are eager to hear, you know, how common is something like this to get approved because their, their site is very limited, you know, they're, they don't have much where, where else to build and, and garage is much needed. Home office is of course even more needed these days. Would you have any?
Yeah, you know, you have everything here, you know, you provided everything that we asked for and all like that, so, you know, you gave us the deed, you gave us the survey, you gave us everything, we kind of answered all our questions and all like that, so I just would like to hear from the, you understand our concern.
Okay.
Conservation board.
Okay, great, and then if that's the case, then.
I'm gonna set it up for a public.
Public hearing, okay, so then we just will find out.
What happens at a public hearing is the neighbors are notified by letter. All the neighbors are notified.
Yes.
Secretary handles that, or, you know, notified by letter and all like that. And then if somebody has any concerns or would like to speak at the meeting, we address that.
Okay.
And then we just, like you say, then we hear all the information and board and so on and so forth, and then they would make a vote.
Okay, great.
Like, like we did tonight on the first one.
All right, thank you so much and I'll coordinate on, I believe we have the neighbor's address, yes, at the bottom of our application and we'll just get the wording from either Cheryl or Kelly.
Yeah, we, we send it out, Kelly or Cheryl, they send it out.
Oh, oh, I see, in the past, we had to send it out as a notarized letter, but.
No, maybe you do it from, maybe that's code spring or no, I don't know, maybe, but what Phillips County, we do here is the, the secretary will send it out to the neighbors.
Okay, okay, so I'm remembering a different jurisdiction, okay, thank you.
You can just. Okay?
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, good night.
Okay, good night.
Okay, next is, on the agenda is 699 Old Ollman Post Road. Next, the applicant is a proposed application proposes a 1,762 square, square foot addition to a 288, 2,888 square foot pre-existing nonconforming structure. The applicant does not comply with section 175 123B2. Further, the proposed addition exceeds 1,000 feet and also proposes a cumulative footprint of 3,000 square feet requiring site plan review. And so there are several variances needed on this. Is the, is the architect here? To speak to this, Kelly or Joe?
Yes, David Spencer's on.
David what?
I'm here.
Okay, can I, can I speak to him?
Oh, he's on.
Does it go in there?
Can.
You gotta tell me around here, right?
I don't have, I have Paula, I have Paula on my screen. Hello?
I'm here, I can see everybody.
Oh, I can see you, okay, good, all right. So I guess, I got the letter from the planning board and they don't have any, there's no problems with it from the planning board. I got that letter and I just got a letter tonight emailed back to me from a copy, I guess, is from the easement regarding the land trust and all like that and they, they don't have any problems with it. They said that, in our review, we did not note anything that, in the provided plans that consistently conflicts with the terms of the conservation easement. All right, so that eliminates that issue. So the, I guess, the issue comes is the size, the size of it, because you're trying to expand from 2,088 to, what is it, almost another 1,700, something like that, right? Yeah, so that, that's the one issue, but you need a couple of variances. Adam, what are, we're fresh, we need variances that we need here?
Never had this bill.
No.
Well, yeah, in terms of the variances, I mean, it's really one variance, which is section 175 dash 23B2 of the code limits the enlargement of a nonconforming structure to 25% of its floor area. And they're proposing an increase that's larger than 25%. And that's in terms of the variance from this board. That's the only relief that they're seeking from this board. If it's granted, they would then have to go back to the planning board for site plan because the addition exceeds 1,000 feet. So all the site plan issues will be, excuse me, dealt with by the planning board.
Okay, so I see the existing structure is 2,888 square feet and they propose that's. that's uh four thousand six hundred and fifty square feet, so it'd be a one thousand seven hundred and sixty-two square feet increase, which is definitely over way over the twenty-five percent. Uh, and it's not really attached to the house, but I guess it's the cat, I guess it has the proposed pergola roof and that makes it uh not a separate structure. Am I correct? Is that would that be, Adam?
Well, uh, I don't think the 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 code specifically speaks to that. Uh, what they were referred to from us was uh an increase in the um square footage of the proposed new structure, which uh exceeds twenty-five percent of the existing structure. Uh, it's a sixty-one percent increase, and that's the single variance that they're they're coming to the board for.
Okay, uh, okay, any questions for the board members here? Well, Mr. Lim has a question, hold on.
Are they claiming that the two buildings are one existing structure?
Uh, uh, Mr. Lim wants to know, uh, Mr. State, if if the you're saying that just two buildings are one structure?
So, can I, if you don't mind.
Mr. Lim, he said he didn't have a computer, so I got him on the phone. You want to know if the two, are you considering it one structure?
It's considered one structure. It's an addition um to the house. The um, the built, your your building official has deemed it as an addition as per the New York uh code. Um, if you cite the building code, you would see it is it is truly an addition to the house. And basically, by definition, um, you know, if it has a roof over it, it's a continuation of the floor area. Uh, therefore, it follows the requirements of an addition. Obviously, if we were to put windows and doors on the side of the breezeway, I don't think anyone would have any doubt in their mind that it's an addition. However, if we were to add a porch, a covered porch under your own home, that would be considered an addition. So uh, so by all accounts, it it is an addition in one building. And I believe the two variances, there were two variances we were seeking, which was really um, the nonconformity of the existing house because it was over the front yard property line and the fact that the lot is undersized due to the zone. Um, the the issue of the size of the structure, however, is not um the variance we're seeking. It only requires uh that we uh go to zoning for a special permit. Um, and as long as it falls into the characteristics of the rest of the house and property, um, then then we can look at those other two variances. So I don't know.
Well, yeah, ju- just to this, just to clarify, is I understand it um with respect to the uh setback um from the center line or the front yard. Um, you're you're not proposing to change that setback, correct?
That's correct.
And although, as I understand it, um, in the uh zoning district that you're in, which is the R C zoning district, uh, that requires, I believe, ten acre minimum uh zoning, but you have four point eight acres.
Correct.
But you're, you know, again, it's, those are just pre-existing nonconformities. What you're you're seeking is uh basically a variance to the limit on the size of the addition for a non-conforming structure, which you you the structure is. Um, you can, as a right, increase it up to twenty-five percent. Um, you're here before the zoning board because you're seeking to increase the the structure by an amount larger than twenty-five.
That's right. That's 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 where the special permit comes into play.
Right, but you would need a, you would need to vary the special permit limit because it's up to twenty-five percent. You're proposing more than that. I mean, I I think we're we're talking about the same things. We're probably just using
Yeah.
terminology, but yes, to increase the size of a non-conforming structure, which is what um you have, you do need a special permit from the zoning board. Um, the code says you can do that up to twenty-five percent, but in fact, you're seeking to increase it by more than twenty-five percent.
That that is correct, but I believe there's more to that language in that section of the code. Um so, but anyway, that that be that as it may.
Well, I'd like to get a faith, you know, what we're looking for here first, you know, let's let's get that to tone.
Well, a again, it's you you can can, you can increase a non-conforming structure by the grant of a special permit from the zoning board of up to twenty-five percent, while in agreement with that.
Right.
The application here is the increase is going to be more than twenty-five percent. So we're granting a special permit and what they're seeking is to authorize it for an amount greater than twenty-five percent.
Correct.
All right, are you in agreement with that? Hold on, Mr. Lim wants no consent here, okay, what is it, sixty-one percent or something?
Sixty-one.
Uh, sixty-one percent.
Sixty-one percent.
I have a question also. I um, in view of the fact that this is um a in addition, I wanted to know why they uh connected it by a breezeway rather than, you know, uh, uh, just an a regular connection within the house.
Sure. Um, well, basically, the, when you look at the existing house, you'll see that it's surrounded by these open covered porches. Um, and what we really wanted to do was respect the architecture of the existing home um by continuing this idea of the open porch in the form of this pergola or this open breezeway. And um, you know, the idea is that, you know, the homeowner, should it be inclement weather, they can go from one house uh, not from one house, but from the house and into the barn, uh, protected under rain and such. But um but they but they aren't necessarily in the house because then you have to condition it, you have to heat it, you know, that breezeway space. Uh, so really, it was meant to uh respect the architecture of the original home, not glom onto it with with any sort of addition and to basically create breathing room between between the structures. Um, but still maintain the notion that the homeowner can travel back and forth uh between the two.
Right, because because looking at the drawings, it looks like two separate houses.
Which is exactly the way a barn to a house would be in a in a traditional sense. Um, but that's not, that's not what how it's to be used.
Now, this barn has a bedroom, a kitchen, and a family room, right? I mean, it's building.
I'm sorry, say that again.
You have a you have a bedroom, a kitchen, a bedroom, a kitchen, and a and a family room.
Yeah, I mean, the main, the the main house has
Like a cottage, basically.
I don't I don't see it that way. I see it as really the existing home has four small bedrooms. It has, they just completed a a rather extensive renovation inside with a new kitchen, uh, a living and a dining room. There, this space is meant for uh the kids to have a ping pong table, to have uh the, an extra fifth bedroom uh when they have friends stay over. Um, and yes, there's a counter uh and some appliances. There's a refrigerator for beverages and such, a wine cooler. But really, the main kitchen is in the house itself. They just
And it's a bedroom upstairs, right?
I'm sorry?
Bedroom upstairs, correct?
There's a, the the fifth bedroom to the house is upstairs in in it as a loft.
But I'm saying it's livable. If somebody wanted to live in it there by themselves, it'd be right? If I were to live on it, if I wanted to live there, I could live here, correct?
Well, I I don't think you would because uh it's very limited into what you can do in there.
But could you, not would you?
All right, uh, right, I I can't see, any questions?
I mean, if you're a family, if you are certainly a family member of, you know, you could stay there for a few weekends, a week or such, but I don't think you could really live in that space for an ex, months at a time.
Eighteen hundred square feet, almost seventeen hundred something square feet. There's a lot of houses in the areas that aren't as big as seventeen hundred square feet.
Right, but keep in mind that it's it's an open volume of space and a a third of that is really the garage storage space for garden tools and equipment as well as the greenhouse. So
I'm sorry, go ahead. Original structure is almost, it's two hundred and two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet, almost three, let's say close to three thousand square feet. That's not a small house.
Right. However, because it's built of an older generation, the rooms inside are rather small.
Right.
The bedrooms inside uh are tiny.
Right.
So
My concern is, I don't, I, you know, I went through the area and all like that. I really don't see any other, anything like it, you know, I'm trying to say, you know, I don't see like another uh, like the houses next door around or a single family home. I don't see something like that, is what I'm trying to say. You understand my concern?
I'm sorry, you don't see single family homes around it?
I see single family homes. I don't see something with an a another building or another, you know, connected with a pergola like that. I don't see anything else in the area like that, is what I'm trying to say.
I mean, are you saying that you you haven't seen people convert their barns into lofts and place
What I'm saying is I haven't seen any other structures in that area like that, correct?
Yeah, we've seen it a lot.
What?
I mean, I feel like we see it all the time.
Okay. Any other, uh, any messages, any anybody have any questions, board members, any concerns? Is there anybody in the audience, Cheryl, that wants to speak on this? Kelly, Cheryl?
Sorry, um, I don't see any hands up.
I don't, I don't see any hands. Okay, uh, anybody, any other board members have any questions? Uh, yes, hold on, Mr. Lim has a question. I got him on the phone. Mr. Lim has a question, he's on the phone. Oh, you don't have a question. He doesn't have a question. Okay. Paul, you got a question?
You're muted, Paul.
Oh.
Yeah, there you are.
Um
The the issue in my mind is how do we know that this wouldn't be used as like a
Michael?
Bed and breakfast or
Oh, yeah.
Um You know, that that's that's up to you guys. That's that's the town to set your regulations on Airbnb, bed and breakfast, so on and so forth. Um I really feel that it's not, we shouldn't use the owner as a whipping post in the sense of saying, oh, this looks like an Airbnb, we suspect it might be, and therefore we are going to not approve this. Um, so this is, I I can't guarantee, no one can guarantee you how owners how the owner is going to use this for future generations and years and years to come. Um, and all I can say is the owners came to us. Their fa- their their children are getting older. They would like to extend their uh uh space. So when they have extended families stay over, they can use it for that purpose. And I think this is a something that everyone does. Um, and so I'm not, I I again, I can't I don't know what's gonna happen in fifty years, you know, thirty years. All I can say is this is what has been put for us uh in terms of what the client's request is and um you know, it's up to the town's own local laws and regulations to sort of figure out how to how to manage that aspect of it. Uh, you need a, perhaps you need a license to run an air uh, an Airbnb or a bed and breakfast. I don't know. But in terms of the variance that we seek is for the structure to be used as a family room and a family space uh for the client.
Okay, uh, well, I can roll the factors now. We use, we use a sheet, five factors she questioned uh in order to consider the um application. Uh, the first one is what possible detriment would the variance have on nearby property? My concern on that one is that, you know, like I said, that, you know, I know it's not a, you know, they say it's not a separate structure. Go ahead. Hello? You say it's not a separate structure, like I understand that because it's connected with a pergola, but it does appear, if you're driving down a street and you look at it, it's gonna appear as a separate structure.
Right, and at the same time, it also honors the architecture of the existing home.
Correct.
Correct? And so I think it fulfills the, so in, to answer your question about what detriment does have to the property, I think it ma- I think it falls within the rural character of the area. Quite often, you see the main house and you see a barn structure uh nearby. Uh, so I think if the architecture falls within that that setting
Right.
And um
Which is not a barn structure though, is it? It's not a barn structure. It's not a barn, is it?
No, the art, the the styling, I should say, not its use, the styling of is is made to appear as though uh it is like a barn structure. Okay, but that's not use.
No, there's not, you're not gonna, there's no barn doors on it. You're not gonna use it as a barn, are you? Anyway.
Well, I mean, there's one section that has the garden equipment, the 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 lower third.
Right, and you wouldn't get set of the barns, sometimes.
No, I mean, there's not gonna be livestock living in here or anything.
Okay, uh, okay, second one is the, what impact uh would the variance have on the character of the neighborhood? I'll have to be after that.
Um Well, I think it would have a positive. Did you, was the last word neighborhood? What what impact would it?
What impact would the variance have on the character of the neighborhood? The character of neighborhood, you know.
Right, so again, I, we we went to great lengths to make sure that the proposed addition uh respects the massing and the scale of the existing house. Uh, it is slightly burned into the earth, so it's uh, we can keep the roof line down. Um, and as I said before, it doesn't, uh, it's no closer to the front yard set uh setback uh from the road. It's further back. So uh, really, it's 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 surrounded by its landscape and such that it's it's just another feature on the landscape. And it has no impact on the on the on the variance.
All right, well, like I said, my concern, like I said, is the size of it, you know, and I don't see it in that area like, that's my concern and I don't. If you didn't get the variance, how else could you build uh what you want to or accomplish your goal?
There, when they have decide, I've answered that question. I'll look that up.
I know, I saw, I saw a lot of answers you had, but we're gonna go by the five factors, like, you know. I know you have to go other other questions before the planning board. I understand that.
Right, right. No, I um
I guess this thing is, you know, how else could you um accomplish, I'll put it this way. Could you attach this to the house? Would that take up less square footage on the area?
Very minimal. I mean, the breezeway section is roughly six, seven feet wide by twenty feet long. Um, if we're asking to sort of uh uh move the structure over so it's actually uh connected to the house. In my mind, in my professional opinion as an architect, I think that would be a huge mistake. I think it would uh uh actually take away from the historic character of the existing house. It's our philosophy that we can see what is old and original and what is new. Um, and by trying to connect, in this case, by trying to connect uh these roof lines and such, I think it would just uh detract of uh, you know, uh, from the overall house.
Okay, uh, any board members have any any uh comments?
Um, I have a question. So if we approve this, uh, the variance, it goes it goes back to the planning board for their approval? Is that correct?
The back to the planning board, right. The back to the planning board, right.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one? All right, what, what code requirements do you seek to vary? Adam, we know it's the one about more than the twenty-five percent, correct?
That's it.
All right, all right. Mr. Seston, you agree with that? You're good, okay, you agree with that? Okay. What impact or effect do the variants have on occurring physical, environmental conditions in the area? I mean, would it change anything, the conditions in the areas? Is grading proposed? Will be paving previously driveway there or anything like that?
No, in fact, I think there will be less, less of a driveway and more gardens sort of between, between the driveway and the structures. So if anything, it would be, of course, it's a stone driveway anyway, but the, there would be less of that.
Okay. Is the variance requested as a result of a self-created hardship?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last part.
Is the variance, is this, the variance requested, is it the result of a self-created hardship? No, it's not, because you're
No.
Not like you put a deck there and all of a sudden you're asked to provide.
Correct, correct.
This is something that you just wanted to, but I wouldn't have a, I just, sorry. Is there any questions? Any board members at this time? Anybody have any questions? Anything else like that? Okay, now you've got to go back to the, if you were granted this variance, you still have to go back to the planning board, correct?
Yeah, and actually to, technically speaking, we are going up to the planning board in the sense, we started our process with zoning. It was only, you guys had requested a letter from the planning board of just if they had any concerns or anything like that, which you received. So, in granting this zoning application, this just allows us to move forward in terms of getting the additional information we need to put together. Everything from the color of the paint to how the septic works, you know, so on and so forth, all these things that we have to do anyway in order to build the project, number one, to get a building permit and, and meet all the planning board requirements. So, the zoning board was really our first step in, in that. And, and we will be obviously going and meeting in front of the planning board as well.
Okay.
Deliver their requests.
All right, if there's no questions in the board at this time, then I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Okay, Mr. Seston moves to close, is a second. Now, Mr. Lim seconds it. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Now, the motion for have a roll call vote. Mr. Lim, how do you vote on that?
I'm voting no.
Mr., Mr. Lim votes no on the variance.
Because we talked to the side, the increase in the non-conformity to sixty-one percent.
Because he's voting no because of the increase of the size and the non-conformity of sixty-one percent versus where we, twenty-five percent is allowed. Mr. Seston?
Looking at it, you know, Mr. Spence said something very true. You can't tell what is gonna end up fifty years down the road. And the old saying, if it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, sounds like a duck, it's a duck. This is gonna, in my opinion, at some point turn into an apartment or something. So, based on that, I vote no.
Okay, Mr. Seston is no. I grant it.
I vote yes.
Mr. Flanser votes yes. By Miss Claire?
Well, I'm gonna vote yes on the basis of, I'm only voting that I'm waiving the requirement of twenty-five percent, you know, a maximum addition.
Hello?
Sorry?
Hello?
But, I, I, you know, I, I, I'm gonna leave it to the planning board to determine if, if the project goes forward.
Well, it's okay, so how?
So I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote yes.
There's no, you can't have any restrictions on the yes, it's either yes or no, you know?
No, I'm gonna, I'm voting yes, but because it's going to the planning board for further review.
Right, right, okay, but I understand. Okay, so, yes, all right. So, my, my concern with this is the size, okay? I understand everything, you know, the, you know, the tech has stated and so on and so forth, but the original structure is two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight square feet. That's a fair-sized home. And this other structure is gonna be, you know, one thousand seven hundred sixty-two, that's a sixty-one percent increase. And plus it's a lot size, but this, you know, I, I feel it's a big increase, so I'm gonna vote no on this, on this application. So that means, the way, if I got it right, it's three votes no and two votes yes, so the application is denied at this time. Mr. Rod?
Well, that, that's the vote, three, two.
Okay. Hello, Mr.? Hello?
Can I say something as the owner?
Sure, Mr. Flack, go ahead.
I'm, I'm really dismayed. I, I have a lot of trust in my fellow citizens and I, you know, think I deserve the benefit of the doubt. I'm gonna have a very hard time describing my wife and children what's transpired. I hired a deeply talented architect to honor a house that was built in eighteen-ten and renovated in eighteen-seventy-three with a structure that architecturally honors that history. And the, if you, I invite any of you to come over for some tea, walk through the house, experience the size of what is appropriately diminutive from a period perspective. But it is so troubling to be treated thus. I'm really, really surprised and I, I, I don't know what to say to my wife and kids at this point. The fact that there's a discussion about Airbnb and things that are just deeply unfair, we Airbnb is a house, or whatever the term is, as long as we've owned it since two thousand twelve. My kids are getting older. They're looking for some space to rec.
All right.
I'm, I'm here. My kids are getting older. They're looking for some space to, I guess I need to start my video, but my kids are getting older. They're looking for some space to share with friends and, and older peers. And they don't wanna be on top of mom and dad all the time, so I wish you trusted me as much as the trust that we all have in you. I, I feel like this is a very strange thing. We bought a period house that's non-conforming because in eighteen-ten, you built a house next to the road. You didn't build it away from the road. We've honored that architecture in all of our upgrades to date. And I just, I respectfully request that you'll give this some more consideration. We've been at this since September. We've tried to be very gracious in our approach architecturally and in our respect for this group. I've said enough. I don't wanna waste your time anymore. But I, I, I just respectfully request that you'll give this a second look. And, and I hope we don't have to spend four more months trying to get there. But I, I, I really would like some consideration in that respect.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I would just like to add that while you're looking at specifically, specific numbers, they're just numbers. When you look at the design and the drawings, it does not speak to being what you say it is in terms of its size.
Right.
Looking at percentages, numbers, that's not how we experience the world. We experience in reality of physical structures. And so I, I find that the, using that as a basis is not really looking at the full picture.
The house is a third the size of, of all kinds of houses in the Garrison area, so while I respect that twenty-eight hundred is, is a, is not a, a small house by many, many considerations. The aggregate with the addition is still a third the size of, of a great number of houses in Garrison.
Yeah, but they're on ten acres, not four.
Yeah, but they're, they're might be on a ten acre property. I mean, even though you're, you're zone ten acres now, I know he changed his zoning and so on and so forth, and I, and I understand that, but you're not on ten acres.
No, but.
That doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, right.
That doesn't matter that this, the, the five acre.
Well, I understand. Well, listen, the board, the board has voted, so at that point in time, Adam, can you speak it up?
I mean, you know, the board voted and then it entertained some additional comments, so if, you know, the board, I mean, I'm not the sixth vote of the board. It, it's up to the board if, up to you if, based upon the additional comments or additional information. If you, you know, that, that's up to the board as a whole. If, if you wanted to, in light of the additional comments that were made, whether you wanted either additional time, additional information, but that's up to the board.
Right. Right, I understand.
Well, I just wanna say my comment had, had no meaning towards Mr. Flack. I'm sure he's
I didn't take it personally.
But you have to look at it from a long-term perspective. Mr. Flack, at some point, this property will change hands and it can, its use could change. And that's, that's the concern.
Of which the boards in the future will make that determination to allow that.
Yeah, the, the one thing I would add to Mr. Seston's concern is, in the zoning district that you are in, it is possible, for example, as I look at the code, to have a bed and breakfast use, as just one example, but that can only occur by obtaining site plan approval and review of that use by the planning board.
Correct.
So in other words, can, you know, the property can be put to certain uses theoretically, but only by approval. Without that approval, right now, the structure cannot be used for that use because they have not sought that, that approval.
And my daughter, Emmeline, and my son Elliot aren't planning on having their friends over for bed and breakfast.
Right, but there's a, there's a vehicle in place by which the town can regulate the use of the, of the property. So, at that time, should, should anyone, any future owners of the property, then at that time, those decisions could be made. But to say that it smells like a duck and then just suggest that, well, therefore it must be, is, is not a, I don't find that quite fair in a review of the project.
Yeah, all right. Well, you made a hard hole. Listen, this board here is not here to hurt anybody, okay? I hope Mr. Flack realizes that.
I
Nobody, nobody, you know, we're, we're, this is all a volunteer board of neighbors. I live on all over the first road, you know what I'm trying to say? So I'm down the other end, you know, but I'm saying, nobody's here to hurt anybody, okay? Everybody's here to just trying to look, doing the best thing for the, for the neighbors and for the city area. Everybody has the concerns of the town at heart. Here, so what I'm gonna do is, you, you presented a good, a good point. I had, you presented a lot of good points. Mr. Rod, is it possible to ask for a re-vote?
Well, I mean, what, it's up to the board in the sense that after you voted, we heard additional information that was put into the record. So it's, it's the board's decision and the board would have to, you know, vote by a majority in the sense, and, and these are, these are the options. I mean, number one, if you wanted to, if you wanted more information based upon the comments that the board received after the vote, I mean, I don't know if, if you do or, or you don't. But the procedure would be to vote to recall the vote you just made based on the receipt of additional information, and if the board either wanted to readdress it tonight based upon the additional information or to think about it and put it over for next month, the, the board can do that, but the board would need to act by a majority to recall the vote based upon its receipt of additional, you know, testimony and additional record evidence.
Okay. No, I don't, and Mr. Lim wants to know, has to be majority anonymous?
Yeah, my understanding would, would be, it would, if, if the board wanted to, and I'm not sure what the board wants to do. You have to, you know, but if, if you wanted to ask for additional information and additional time, it would be a majority vote to, to recall the, the prior vote.
Right.
And to, and, and then it's up to the board as to whether you would want some additional information to consider for next month, to obtain the information right now from the applicant and his representative or whoever, and then, you know, re-vote you know, later in this meeting.
Right.
That, that's, that's up to the board.
Okay.
Mr. D, can I say one more thing? Just one quick?
Hope Mr. Flack, have Mr. Flack here, go ahead.
Yeah, it's gonna be quick. I, I, I wanna, my dad was on the planning board and zoning board in Redding, Connecticut for two decades. So I deeply respect the process and I know you're volunteers as citizens. I wanna be heard in that respect. This is really a project about children and grandchildren. Our kids were quite young when we bought the house. They're in college. We're hoping to have grandchildren. If everything works out, it'll be wonderful. The house doesn't set up well at all for that, for various reasons. This is, that is the fundamental aspect here. I hope my kids wanna live in this house at some point, so this is not about anything to do with a commercial enterprise of any nature that has nothing to do with the passion behind this project.
Okay. I, I've never done this. This is for, okay? If there's a re-vote, you're gonna be the first, okay?
I, I wanted to, to say I would be comfortable in revisiting this next month. If, if, if the board wanted to vote to, we, you know, to look at it again.
Well, I, I don't see what next month is gonna do. I mean, you know, the whole thing is that the board's decided, but Mr. Flack has presented a a good case, okay, which, which we didn't hear before. I wish we had spoken before we took the vote, in all honesty, okay? He didn't.
I didn't know what my role was, so I
I understand, and I, and I, and I understand a hundred percent. You understand where I'm coming from, you know? I would like to hear this before we evolve it.
Okay, okay.
I, I, you, you make a good case and I understand it, you know, like I said, we all live, we all live in this town, all of us, everybody council, nobody's here to, to hurt anybody or anything else like that. We're just here to, you know, protect the interest of all, all the town members, so.
I understand.
At this point in time, I can ask, I'm gonna ask for to recall a vote. Can I get a second on that?
Can I just say something? Mr. Flack, would you reconsider your design to, to make it less likely that some future owner could make it a, an apartment?
Well, I, I don't know. Sure, I, I, I don't really know how to answer that question. I mean, I need a garage, right? I don't have a garage, period. It, and you, you can understand with this, the last snow, couple of snowstorms we had, it's become It, and you you can understand with this, the last snow, couple of snowstorms we had, it's become a little more, uh, you know, uh it doesn't happen every year, but it it having a garage would be nice, and and that's for uh to keep a vehicle, yeah. And then, and then um we just simply don't have enough space with the, I mean, one of our bedrooms, some of our bedrooms are like eight foot by eight foot. I mean, they're they're, you can't even fit a bureau in the thing, right? So um so I I.
It sounds like a lot. You understand when you say, when you're looking at it, you say you got four beds and three guys, where it sounds like a lot, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I know, I know it sounds like a lot. I I'm envisioning having two kids with spouses and grandkids at some point for Christmas, right? So I'm not, I I'm not talking about uh something, and and honestly, this is this is not a a ostentatious approach to living. This is really quite modest in many respects, but this is a place where you can fit a ping pong table and and the kids can make a little more noise without keeping mom and dad up and.
Yeah, well, it's a little bigger than, you got a bedroom up there too, you know, and you got.
I know.
Like that, a little bigger than ping pong table, so you know, let's let's uh let's talk.
No, I understand, but uh but I I if if you envision Elliot and his wife in that bedroom and Emmeline and her husband in the other part of the house, you you're you're starting to run out of room for grandkids, so.
Tell you what I'm gonna do, I I I, like I say, you didn't, uh, you know, Zoom is a little confusing sometimes. You didn't speak before the vote, so.
Yes, I know that.
Now you have to speak, so what I'm gonna do now.
Mute it again?
I'm gonna ask for a vote to a recall. Can I have a second?
Second.
Uh Mr. Len seconds it, uh the vote to recall. Okay, so the vote to recall. Okay, now, on the information that we've heard from, unfortunately, that we didn't hear before the vote, uh and you know, I'd like to call for uh a new vote. I don't see holding off for no- next month gonna do anything. We have all the information. Everything is divided by the architect. Mr. Flag, uh they are passionate uh defensive of his case, unfortunately, after the vote, but we were able to recall the vote, so at this time, I'm gonna call for a new roll call vote.
Excuse me, can I, can I just um add to what Vinnie had said?
Sure.
Um, what about if you enclose that breezeway? Um then that would make it more of a uh uh one structure rather than two. Would that be something you would consider?
I would consider closing the breezeway. I'm gonna have to spend some architectural dollars to make it. I, what we wanted to avoid was turning a beautiful period house into something that had something pushed up against it, right? So we were trying intentionally, and I thought it was a brilliant suggestion from the architect to make this structure look like a supporting structure to a period house. And we we did that with the pergola. If the solution is to enclose that, I would consider enclosing that. I hope we can come up with a a gracious approach to uh doing that, and I would suggest maybe we're gonna have to use a lot of glass or something, just so it it had, it doesn't look like it's um glommed on to this beautiful eighteen seventy-three house. I think you all can appreciate the history.
That that would give you access from one structure to the other in bad weather, you know, better access.
I'm not adverse to the concept. I need to talk to David about a solution, um but I'm not totally.
I don't, I don't think, you know, I understand that point. I don't know if that should be part of the vote. Um I understand what Paul was saying and all that, but um the architect has explained uh his reason for his designing and so on and so forth. Uh so I think we're just gonna vote, we're gonna vote as the plans are. And uh whatever it is, it is. I'm asking for a re-vote. I can't do any more than that, Mr. Flag, okay?
I understand, okay.
Yeah, just um, Bob, just so procedurally.
Yeah.
Procedurally, I think it you you should do a a a vote to recall, and again, you would need three to recall the vote, and then.
Okay.
And then it's up to the board, what if if the, you know, and and we should hear from the board members if they want to either do it tonight, which they can, if they want more information, um I, but again, that should be up to the majority of the board.
Okay. Uh well, I I I asked for the vote, and I got a a second from Mr. Len and Mr. uh and Mr. Claire, so um I guess, we'll, let's discuss it. Uh as far as.
Well, I'm ju- I'm just saying, if 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 the board wants to recall the vote.
Right.
And and if there are three votes to re- to recall, we should do a roll call to recall and then decide what you want to do next.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna do a roll call on the uh we, on the on the recall. Uh Mr. Lim?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Lim votes to recall. Uh and Mr. S- Stone?
I'm willing to do that if uh Mr. Flag comes with some options when we see him again.
Okay, uh uh Granite?
Yes.
Okay, Paula?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Okay, now now that the discussion has to be, uh does the board have enough information? Uh after this recall, do you want to vote? Do you want to um uh like Paul suggested, something about uh co- confident closing in the breezeway, or do you want to put this over to next month and vote again on next month? You need more information, or are you prepared to vote tonight? So I'm gonna start with uh Mr. Lim.
I'm prepared to vote tonight.
Mr. Lim says he's prepared to vote tonight. Mr. Mr. Franzer?
I'm prepared to vote.
Uh Mr. S- Stone?
I I'm willing, I would like to uh see what options we get next month.
Next month, okay. Uh Ms. Claire?
I I would prefer to wait till next month also.
Okay, what what are you looking for, for for them to?
I'm looking for, I'm li- I'm looking to see if he might consider that glass enclosure of the breezeway, because that would make me much more comfortable.
Okay, Mr. Stone?
Yeah, that's that's essentially what I'm looking for too.
What you're looking for is something, plants are closing that breezeway, is that what you're?
Right, to make it one house, not two.
Okay, this is, this is uh uh Lenny, you're looking for?
No, I'm not looking at the vote.
Okay, and Mr. Lim's not looking to enclose it. All right, I I I'm willing to to vote for tonight, so I guess uh uh Mr. Rod, you got three people willing to vote tonight and two members want to uh vote next month, but they, we we want to, looking for plans to enclose the breezeway. What happens now?
Well, it it, you know, it's up to the board. If you want to discuss it uh more among yourselves about uh the the option of voting tonight as opposed to um next month.
Right.
Uh, you know, it's the majority of of the board. Um it it's up to you guys to have a dialogue about that.
Right, right. It's up to, I know it's tough to do on Zoom, you know what I'm trying to say? Um I guess the thing is um.
Can I?
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, can I just offer just some, a little bit more detail about open versus closed breezeway? Uh Ms. Claire, the the notion of the open breezeway was that when when one arrives and they want to go through the back door um to the kitchen and such, they go into the terrace, and rather than going open a door for a breezeway, then go through the breezeway to come back outside again, and then go back into the kitchen is one of the reasons we did not enclose the breezeway. We know we can um and such. Uh but that was, that was the primary reason for not doing it, that one, the breezeway acts as sort of a gateway into the back rear yard and remained open. Uh I think architecturally, as Mr. Flag described, uh if we were, if we were to enclose it, it would primarily be of glass and such. Uh so ar- the architectural character, the drawings you have before you would look very similar with the exception of some notes that would point out some glass in that area. Uh however, as I said before, the idea was to really go back to the to the rear terrace area and through the garden without having to go inside and then back outside again. Just for your consideration.
Okay. Mrs. Stone, you have any questions on that?
Well, I still, I I'm willing to wait until next next month, but since you guys voted, I'll vote with you, but my vote won't change.
Well, we haven't voted yet, so I'm just trying to say, well, all we did was vote to recall, is under, I guess the three people said they're willing to vote tonight, so.
I I'm, I just wanted to ask Mr. Flag how he feels about the the idea of enclosing the breezeway. Is that something you would, you know, be a pro- have a problem with doing? I mean.
I know.
I I would not have a problem with do- doing it. I just, I I guess I just want to make sure that David can come up with a solution that is um workable, but um one of the things we had been working with was repeating some of the period architectural elements that have somewhat of a Gothic feature on the porch. So I guess we'd try and do that with incorporating glass, but but that way we could echo that the repeat of that architectural feature that's an eighteen seventy-three feature. Um I think it's doable. I I wouldn't be adverse to doing that. Um it's, I don't, I I don't think it's the best solution to have to go, you know, through this to get to the kitchen, um you know, in into this and then out again, but um.
But how often do you go to, are you gonna go to the kitchen from the outside?
Well, that's, you know, it's a small, it again, uh it doesn't sound like a small, we don't have a mudroom or something like, so the kitchen is the mudroom, right? So if you if you go in the front door with your s- your snow and your boots or your groceries or what, you know, it's it's not um.
Also, the route that you carry all your groceries to.
All the groceries, yeah.
So they, the car would come up to near this connector, get all your groceries, walk through the back terr- rear terrace, get into the kitchen and and put your bags on the counter. So that that's what that primary route is. There is no um you know, we have a roof line to sort of connect the two buildings um to allow passage back and forth quite easily. Um and again, we can certainly add the gla- add glass, do whatever we can. It's not the best architectural solution. Um it is, it I don't think is as strong of a statement as as having uh a continuation of the open porch around the house. Uh but we can certainly make it work. That's that's for sure. Uh I think it just adds a little inconvenience to the daily living of the house, that's all.
All right, uh Mr. Lim, are you prepared to vote tonight, or do you want to wait till next month?
I'm I'm prepared to vote tonight.
Okay, Mr. Lim's prepared to vote tonight. Uh Mr. Granite?
Yes, I'm prepared.
Mr. Franzer, right, you're prepared to vote tonight. Okay, uh I'm prepared to vote tonight. Mr. S- Stone? You want to, you want to wait till?
Can you call me later, Bob, please?
Can you what?
Can you call me later?
Okay, I'm prepared to vote. Okay, you're prepared to vote tonight?
Uh, I'll do whatever you guys want to do.
No, 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 it's up to you. If you want to, what, you want to wait till next month, I just, I might. And Paul, wh- where are you at?
I I would rather wait till next month because I, and I'd like to have the architect and the homeowner think about it. And, you know, I'm I'm not saying you must do the glass uh enclosure, but I I just wanted to, you know, have them think about it and de- and decide, and then I mean, I voted yes even without the glass enclosure, and I I'm planning to vote yes anyway, but I, you know, I think it might be valuable for them to have that time to think about it and then, you know, make their decision as to what they think is is the best thing.
All right, um at this point in time, the two, three want to vote tonight and two want to wait till uh, two want to wait till next month. But uh uh Mr. Rod, how does that stand legally, where?
I mean, i- i- it's up to the board. It's not like a- any one of them i- is a re- a requirement. You don't have to vote tonight. Um you can put it over to next month. Um it would seem that, you know, my two cents, and again, it's it's up to the board, it sounds like there's a lot of information um that um ha- has come in tonight and a lot of testimony.
Right.
I think the the board would probably benefit. Um but again, this is up to the board on my. I think the board as a whole would would um benefit one way or the other with with a a full record and time to think about it as opposed to rush into something if if anyone feels rushed, so.
I appreciate it. All right, Mr. Flag? Uh, Mr. Flag?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, hi. I, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna uh, I I appreciate your attorney's opinion, and uh there are members, you know, here who want to see something uh where you could cover in the um pergola there, but that doesn't mean that that has to be done. What I mean by that is, okay, if we put this over to next month for argument's sake, and you come up with a plan uh to cover it, to to, let's say, close in, and uh you don't like that plan, you want to go with the other plan or something like that, that could be the board's option also. But there are some people who are concerned here and want to see that uh you throw up some kind of a plan or some kind of way of closing it. So I think what I'm gonna do is, I think in all fairness, to do is I'm gonna postpone this till next month.
It was a whole lot, Bob.
Oh, wait, hold on one second.
Enclosed or unenclosed?
Enclosed. We're enclosed with glass, like, I'm talking to Mr.
Can we vote not to enclose it?
Yes, hold on a second. Mr. Lim wants to know, Mr. Rod, Mr. Lim wants to know to vote not to enclose it. I guess, Mr. Rod, what I'm asking you, if they come back with a plan next month uh of enclosing it, and they have a plan here of it not being enclosed, could you take two votes? You know, I mean, can you vote? You understand what I, what I got, what I'm getting at, Mr. Rod?
Well, yeah, yeah, I I think what the the nub of the issue is, they're they're before the zoning board because uh the proposed addition e- exceeds um the the amount that's permitted in the the code. You were presented with one set of plans, uh you heard testimony uh about why that's appropriate. Um there was some record evidence indicating uh how the connection could be altered. Um some board members asked for uh some sort of visual or plan as to what that connection uh would would look like. So the bottom line is the variance, you know, hasn't hasn't changed. Uh the the plan for the variance uh will be more, will, you'll have more options. We're more fully developed based upon, I think, what you asked from um the architect and uh the applicant. So, I mean, the variance, the the uh substance of the variance is the same. It's it's how um it would present, which is something that the zoning board could look at because you're concerned about uh impacts to the neighborhood. Will it have a detrimental effect on neighboring properties? Um so.
Okay, all right.
Just, it's just asking for more information that you can consider.
Does this type of information have an impact on, I I see it as only really an architectural element of 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 this connectors. Does it truly have an impact overall on the project and on the variance application?
I mean, I guess the the short answer is i- if there's not a change in the gross floor area, um then there's no change in the gross floor area.
Right.
Okay, um I guess we did, uh to the architect, uh would it be possible, you thought there's some kind of a presentation next month of what the two members are looking like at the seat possibly enclosed? Could you do that?
Uh I I most certainly can. Um the, again, I just questioned that, does the architecture of of the enclosure have an impact on the variance uh request? And I don't know that this is an architectural review committee uh per se, but rather a a zoning uh review.
It is zoning, but you understand, one of the questions, I wonder if, as we look at it, how it's gonna, how how it's gonna look and how it's gonna affect the neighborhood.
Yeah, so.
That's part of our decision, isn't it?
Well, uh then, I guess what I'm asking, and again, we've, you know, we have been in front of the boards since September, and we also see some uh uh months ahead of us with the planning board, which means that this project could be, you know, in the circles for quite some time. And I'm wondering, I'm making the request that of. of of the board here, could they perhaps, could you perhaps use, look at the drawings, use your imagination of what that enclosed breezeway would be, and make a decision, knowing that we, again, we still have some, quite some time and review from the planning board ahead of us. The tonight's meeting is really about allowing us to move forward on that. And of course, as a host of other organizations like the Hudson Highlands Trust that is also curious to see, again, the color of the paint and the architecture. So I just want, I just wanted to clarify that the 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 architectural aspect of an enclosed breezeway is is that really what's on the line here? To to push this yet another, another meeting, another month, and pushing our ability to go in front of the planning board another month.
No, I understand.
So, that's, that's, that's my concern, that we're just sort of kicking the can down along the road a little bit.
I I think it would be fair to say, David, if I, if I'm wrong, correct me, please, but that we're somewhat at the mercy of the board here, right? So if we need to come up with a glass solution and they voted tonight to come up with a gla- uh, the glass enclosure, we'll do it, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And if Mr. Lynn and others are interested in an open breezeway and and sticking with that solution, we will live with that as the vote. So we we would appreciate if it, respectfully again, if it works for this board to vote tonight, if there, if if it's thumbs up on one and not the other, we'll live with that solution.
All right, I I guess time I'm gonna ask Kelly. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask to speak to the board members, okay, for a second. It's a little tough to do on Zoom. Mr. Lim, how do you feel about this?
He's right. I like to vote tonight.
And you 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 with the open?
I'm with the open.
Well.
Okay.
Mr. Lim? Just, um, uh, just as an option, and we'll rely on who the host is. If you wanted to call a closed session to confer about legal issues with counsel, you can do that. We would have to go into a, you'd have to make the motion.
Right.
And then we would be in a a closed room
Right.
to di- di- discuss.
Right.
Um, so we we can do that as well i- if the board wants.
Okay, Philly, Philly, can you do that? Philly?
Um, I've never done it before.
Do you want us to log off? Do you want us to?
Yeah, maybe if the attendees log off and if all the attendees log off and then Bob give them a time to come back on.
Yeah, okay, let's see. It's nine oh five, so I I I don't think it's gonna be any more than ten or fifteen, fifteen minute discussion. So I would say nine, nine twenty?
Okay.
Would that be fair?
That's fair.
Okay.
Or we could just use the same, same link? Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, nine.
We're gonna have to ask all the attendees that are on that are waiting to be heard also would have to leave the room too.
You do have a hand up.
Where are the hand up?
Yeah, you have a hand up. I don't know if you want to answer that before you get off?
Yeah, I'll answer. Who is it?
Okay, it's John McCann. He's the next person up. Just one sec.
Oh, okay, Mr. McCann?
Yes, I just wanted to know if I'm gonna stay on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, yes, you are.
Okay, doesn't matter what time.
Well, no, we're gonna, we're gonna go into a closed session to discuss this issue here, and then.
All right, as long as I'm here tonight, that's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, nine twenty.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, so it's a Philly, could you do that now? Put us on?
Yep.
Yeah, I would just, you know, Bob, I would make a motion to go into closed session to confer with counsel about legal issues.
I make a motion to go into closed session and confer with counsel. About legal issues.
Second.
Any seconds, is all in favor?
All right.
Okay, all right, we're going to closed session. All right, is everybody back or?
Yes, everybody's on.
All right, Mr. Who do we got here? Mr. Flag, I guess? Mr. Flag there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, hi. Yeah, we we had a session when we discussed it amongst ourselves and all like that, so. There are some people who are interested in, you know, having a close in, and some people aren't. So I mean, you know, go back and forth and to hold you up another month and so on and so forth. I don't think it's fair. So, like I say, the only reason we're because I didn't hear your, I unfortunately I didn't get hear you to speak before the vote. So this is the first time we've done this, so it's a little confusing. But at this time again, I'm gonna call for a real call vote for the plans that were presented as is. So as far as the planning board, they can, you know, they have to look at other things that aren't designs and all like that too. I don't know if they're the interested in closing it or not closing it, but at this point in time, we're just gonna take a vote on the plans as is. So I'm gonna ask for Mr. Lim?
I vote yes.
Uh, Mr. Lim votes yes at the plans as is. Mr. Francis? You vote?
Vote yes.
Okay. Ms. Claire?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Seston?
I'm, I trust the planning board to do the right thing, so I'll say yes also.
Okay, I I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote yes also. So after consideration and Mr. Flag, you there?
I'm here.
I mean, you know, after consideration, like I say, we're only trying to do the best thing.
And and as I said, my dad did it for twenty years, so I do respect that.
All right, and we, I thought you were at a disadvantage of not hearing you beforehand and all like that, so that's.
Yes, I'll do it differently next time.
All right, but you, it's been approved, so unanimously, so.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Next is John McCann, uh, McCann, is he there? Kelly's here, is John McCann on?
I just moved him over.
Move, move, thank you. Ms. McCann?
He's just gotta unmute.
Okay. All right, whatever this is, what this is, this is an application for thinking to build a forty-two foot, no, it's, I'm still a deck. Forty-two foot from the property line and where fifty foot is required. And it's in the back of the house. I know it's in, it's like some woods behind it, so I took a look at it. It's on fourteen Oak Road. Uh, Ms. McCann, you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I I looked at you, I looked at the property, looked at the house. You're looking for a deck. Is there a deck behind your house now?
Yeah, there's an existing part of the deck now, which is the eight feet. So it's already, I don't know when when that was put up. But that's already forty-two feet from the property line now, so it it doesn't meet setback requirements on the existing deck. We're just listening to extend that deck a little bit.
Right.
On twelve feet and then wrap the deck around the house on the south side, which is not a setback problem.
So what kind of variance are you asking for as far as feet?
Uh, two feet.
All right, so fifty foot is required, you're asking for what?
Two feet. Yeah, it's gonna be forty-eight foot from the from the property line.
Oh, forty-eight foot? So you're asking for, yeah, okay. So you're only gonna be two foot to the property line?
No, it's gonna be forty-eight feet to the property line.
You have two feet from the property line is what I'm trying to say. Fifty, you're gonna put forty-eight.
Right.
Okay.
So I'm clear, and looking at the application is there's a requirement for a fifty-foot setback.
Correct.
Our deck is forty-two feet setback from the property line. You're looking simply to extend the deck.
Right.
Right, but it it.
Along the, along the same line.
Right, so it's, so you're proposing a forty-two foot setback when fifty is required, so it's only an eight-foot variance.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, okay, you said two feet. That's why you got the computer.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. So you're looking for an eight-foot variance on a fifty-foot setback, correct?
That's correct.
As I say, look, I looked there, uh, tonight is what it's for, to see the application is complete. You presented everything. The only thing I don't see is plans for your extension, the plans itself, the building plan.
You mean the building plans? We we didn't do the building plans yet because my architect said there wouldn't be a reason until we actually get approved from the zoning board to, you know, have the extra, you know, the extra architectural plans put into place.
Well, see, we can't, we can't approve it without looking at the plan.
For a deck?
Sure.
Yeah. Have to be on record so that it can be looked at by the next board or whomever has to look at it.
Right. So what I can do is, I'll put you off.
This.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, this drawing that that we we gave you will not do. It has to be the actual construction construction drawing.
Correct. What, what, those all get submitted and so on and so forth, but this board, in order to approve something, they have to know what they're approved. Without looking at the plans, we don't know.
Okay, I thought the drawing would do it. I thought the drawing would do it. I mean, it's 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 an outside deck, so.
You have to see the plans and so on and so forth. That's gonna, how it's gonna be connected to your deck and so on and so forth, you know.
My my suggestion is, you know, we know what the proposed setback is, and my proposal would be we could schedule it for a public hearing as long as we get those plans in advance of the next date.
Okay, I understand. Uh, Mr. McCann, do you understand what they're trying to say?
So I have to, I have to come up with construction plans before the next zoning meeting, is that what you're saying?
The only meeting is March eighth, okay? March eighth, say the month from now. Now, you'd have to have those plans, you'd have to get them to the secretary at least ten days before. Because they should have copies of it. You have to, you could have to make, have to make seven, six, one, two, three, four, five, six copies. And then mailed out to us, like, the secretary a week before or so mails out everything for the meeting. You know, it's like the agenda and whatever other information and all that. You have all the information you need. You have your D D, you have everything and so forth. The only thing you're lacking is the thing, I hate to hold you up for two more months and say, okay, next month, you gotta come up with a plan.
All right, well, let me ask you a question. Before I put a thousand dollars into the, into the plans, would it, would it look like it would be approved if we had the correct plans?
I can't give you those answers. You know, I mean, I know, I understand it's difficult, but I can't tell you yes without looking at the plans and having a board vote on it and so on and so forth. So, I mean, you know.
It has to be a construction plan. It could be, it could just be a engineer's drawing with with that put in in with the setbacks part. Like, right, Bob? Is that correct?
Right.
It could be the actual plan such that you can use for construction.
Right, but if that has, has to show where you're gonna connect it to the deck and so on and so forth, how it's gonna be connected to the deck, and, you know, how big is it and so on and so forth. And you're saying it's only gonna be so big, but without the plans, we don't know that. You understand, Mr. McCann?
Understand.
Okay, so I know it's, now you say, is it a gamble? I looked at the house, you, there's only woods behind you there. I don't see any body, you know, but what happens is that, I'll tell you right now, if you go for a public meeting, a public hearing, which would be next month, the secretary is gonna mail all letters to all your neighbors and so on and so forth, you know. So you're surrounding area neighbors, so they have a a chance to look at it and see if they have any concerns.
So can we do that now and get ahead of it, or we have to wait until you see the plans?
No, we can do that now.
Oh, okay, great.
But the letters would go out probably, you know, next week or this week.
Okay, great.
Okay, they'll go out, but you still have to have the plan.
I get it. I get it. You know, I just don't want to hold it up once it.
I'm trying, I'm trying to push you along. I'm not trying to hold you up.
No, no, okay, great.
And then they'll have, be able to listen to meetings next month, and you have the plans, and we can look for plans and make a decision then and then.
Perfect, okay.
And we would need the plans by the twenty-fifth.
By the twenty-fifth.
You got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you can get them sooner, that's even better too, but the twenty-fifth is your dead drop, dead day.
So, Bob, you're gonna hold a, you want the certified letters going out even though he doesn't have his plans all in?
Yeah, yeah, but see, uh, Mr. McCann, you're gonna, the plans have to be by an ar- by an architect or somebody, they have to be stamped, you understand?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, they gotta be stamped, you know, by an architect. I mean, I just don't want you to write on a piece of paper and draw it up, you know, like that. That's not good for us.
No, I get it.
Okay.
That's where the thousand dollars came in at least.
I understand. Every, everything costs today, you know, I.
That's right, absolutely. Okay.
Control that. Are you willing to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
I'm willing to do that.
All right, okay, we'll send the letters out, and we'll we'll make for, it will be a public hearing next month, it's March eighth.
Very good.
And we'll look at that, go to Davis, and we'll make a decision then and then.
Okay, terrific.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thanks, everybody.
Next one is Betsy has had fifteen likes for less.
Garrison?
Yes, I'm moving Manuel in to talk to you.
Okay.
Just one sec.
Hello?
Showing up twice. I'm gonna move him in. Okay.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, Manuel?
Yes, how are you? Sorry.
How are you? Are you the owner or?
No, I'm actually, sorry, we actually work for K T A, which is the the architect's office. I'm not sure, I cannot see the panelists, but I believe Betsy, that is also in here, and also another Cali of mine is also in here.
Okay.
Betsy's here. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Okay. All right, you you're with the architect's office?
So Betsy, I'm sorry, chairperson, she's actually the owner of the property, sir?
Okay, is she here?
Yes, she's here. She's under.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, let me, let me put her on. Hello?
Hello?
Betsy?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, sure.
Okay, hi.
All right, okay. And and looking at your your plans and so forth, your, so your addition, the issue is your addition is gonna go into the wetlands by the stream. So you're looking at, you're gonna have to go to the conservation department because anything that's gonna be built within a hundred foot of a stream, and that's what Sprout Brook wrote, I believe, right? I mean, Sprout Brook Stream?
Uh, I'm not sure.
I know, I know it's a controlled stream, so I don't know who's handling, are you gonna be handling this, or is the architect's gonna be handling this? Who's gonna be handling this?
So.
Manuel.
If if I may, chairperson, actually, we will be handling all that stuff. We'll be handling the application. Obviously, you guys have a letter from the building inspector, the rejection letter, so obviously, from this board, we'll be seeking, we'll we'll be asking i- if we can get the relief of the proposed setbacks. As you can see, you know, we only asking about three feet of the setback requires. We have twenty, twenty-seven point sixty-seven feet, and it's required thirty feet. So we asking for that variance, and it's also highlighted in the bottom of the letter by the building inspector that we need to go into get the setbacks of the proposed portion of that for the wetlands. We are, we are, yes, we are hundred percent correct. I believe part of the process was to come in front of you guys first and then proceed with the wetlands process after that, if that's, if that's correct, from my understanding was.
Yeah, no, our wetlands is the conservation board.
Correct.
Because they have a conservation board, okay? And we sent it to them, and then they sent us a letter telling us, you know, if they have any issues with it, so on and so forth. We can't grant the variance if we don't know what their, what their, what their opinion is and so on and so forth. So I'm gonna have our secretary show, she's gonna forward this to the conservation board, okay? And you'll set up a meeting with them, and they'll go through it, you know, if any concerns or whatever like that, they'll get back to us, and then we'll set up a a public hearing for it.
Okay, so may I ask just a point of clarification, if possible? So in in the meantime, for the next meeting, and I can call Shirley and this one, maybe tomorrow, to try to figure out when the conservation meeting it may be taking place, but in the meantime, do we have to send notifications to the neighbors in regards to the second? But in the meantime, do we have to send the notifications to the neighbors in regards to the second uh or, or to the next meeting for the zoning board in that regards? Or how will that, how, how is that coordinated?
Well, the neighbors, no, no, I wouldn't do that now because um I don't know what this, I don't know what the Conservation Board is gonna say.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
You know, the Conservation Board may have concerns, uh and they may say, you know, that uh within a wetland, and so on and so forth, so uh I, I want to also have a public hearing. I'll go to the Conservation Board, and then after we get the, the approval, or whatever reports from them, come back to us, then we'll set up a public hearing.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. So um is any, for now, do you guys need to see any additional information? Would you like us to go through the project, or do you wanna wait until next time when we come back in front of you guys?
Wait, wait, wait till next time, because I've seen all your presentation, you look like you presented pretty much everything. I don't see anything. You know, you got the deed here, you got uh, you got the survey and so, so forth, uh you got your plans and all that, but I think you're all set with that. I think it's just a matter of getting uh okay from the Conservation Board.
Okay, no problem. So Shirley, will, will that be okay if I call you tomorrow and coordinate the next steps?
Uh sure.
Okay, I appreciate that. I will call Kelly, but um she doesn't wanna talk to me anymore.
There's no sheriff in town, so you have.
Yes, yes.
But I have to ask her what to do.
Good night.
Doing amazing.
I appreciate, I appreciate, you know, I just wanna be in the right crowd, I wanna appreciate Kelly, Shelley, and Linda with the fantastic job that they do on, on the office, and um, you know, I just wanna take that a little bit of time to, to thank them for all the all, all the, the help that they provided me to put all this stuff together, so I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that, okay.
Thank you, Manuel.
We enjoy it, okay, good night, sir.
All right, have a good night.
Night, yeah.
All right, uh from the board, any uh, any new business or? Anybody? Benny?
I'd like to meet, I'd like to meet.
You like what?
I'd like to meet in person.
Oh, why do, why do you say he wants to meet in person? I mean, that, that's not ready yet.
Has he gotten his vaccine?
He's got one, what, he got one, right? He's got one, he's waiting for a second one. We all gotta get vaccinated, that's for sure, all right.
Adam, I have a question for Adam. On um Eben Shapiro, the first one we did, um are you gonna write a referral to the Conservation Board for them, or?
Uh I don't think, I think there was a, you know, the building inspector said they need to go to the Conservation Board.
Okay.
Uh in their denial, um so I, I don't think, and we told them you need to go to the Conservation Board, so.
Did you, yeah, get a letter, you know, I would get something, but for them, if they don't know, we can just tell them they need to submit their plans to the Conservation.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's easy enough for um, let me just take a look, um I mean, I, I certainly uh could ghostwrite a letter uh for Cheryl. Uh you know, just, you know, as you are aware and as discussed at the zoning board meeting on February eighth uh two thousand twenty-one, um because there's an encroachment on the wetland buffer, you need to uh obtain approval from the, I think it's a Conservation Advisory Committee, is that what it's called? The CAC?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Um and so, yeah, they, they were told, but that's, you know, belts and suspenders, I can do that, it's not a problem.
Well, you can do it for two of them, do it for the other one too, aside.
Yeah.
And we just had the same things.
Only because I, I was dealing with Juhi, I mean, she's, you know, really nice, but sometimes she doesn't know what she's supposed to do, so I just thought maybe if the Conservation Board had a little bit of a heads up on what they were looking for, I don't want her to go in there and be like, I don't know why I'm here.
Right, right, so this would be a letter to the applicants notifying them they have to make an application to the Conservation Board.
Okay, all right.
From.
Thanks.
Not a problem.
Okay, that's the both, okay. Anything else, anybody? Like, most, most of you doing John?
A move.
Uh some more, I'm sorry, it took so long tonight, but uh, you know, occasionally you run into these issues.
Not a problem.
All right, good night, everybody.
All right, stay well, everyone, thank you.
Have a good night, thank you.
Good night, guys.
Night.